Moving on to information items, written communication, Dr. Kerma Scoly.
Before we do, I wonder if there's a WICCE update because we met this afternoon.
Sure, very briefly, WICCE met this afternoon and we updated the leadership advisory team, which includes the new superintendent for Avoca. We approved the meeting dates for '24 and '25 and approved the tentative budget for next week.
Thank you, yes. Now I think we're moving on to written communications.
Sure thing, happy to. All right, the board received several written communications this month regarding the 2024-2025 third grade class size at McKenzie Elementary School from Barry Bloom, Brittany Ferris, Gillian Gelfe, Rachel Isbell, and Colleen Sumi.
Okay, want to keep rolling with the administrative announcements?
We have several announcements to make this evening. First of all, the end of the school year has come and passed. We're really excited to celebrate that we just had a great school year, but really significantly, the last couple of weeks have been really wonderful with our students and staff, from our year-end reports to the board. Tonight, you'll hear a little bit more, to kindergarten promotion celebrations, from our musical performance to the retirement celebrations that were especially wonderful this year, from our academic growth of our students, which we recently heard quite a bit about at the committee of the whole and will continue to hear a little bit more about, to the progress accomplished in our strategic plan goals, which again, you'll receive a full report on this evening, our fourth grade clapouts, and our WJHS graduation. It has just really been a wonderful conclusion to the school year. I want to take a moment to the school year. I want to take a moment to thank our teachers and our administrators and our staff for all their hard work this school year, to recognize our students for their commitment to excellence within the classroom and beyond. We have so many examples of our students really going above and beyond the classroom to contribute to their community, and to celebrate our parents and community for their partnership and support, as well as to thank the board for your vision and support of all of this as well. So, thank you everyone for a really great school year. In our culminating event of the school year with our students and families, our WJHS graduation last week at Nutria High School was really very special. I'm grateful for the courage of our team to try something new and admittedly, a little bit scary logistically. We weren't quite sure how this was all going to turn out, and it was just really, really wonderful. I'm grateful for everyone's hard work in making sure that it was a smooth ceremony. Everyone seemed to have a seat, who wanted one, but it was really just a nice, nice celebration of our students and having them all together in one place was really worth all of the extra effort. So, we learned a lot through it. I think Nutria did as well, but it was really wonderful. So, thank you to everyone who joined us. And then on Thursday, we said farewell to a really outstanding group of students and staff, and we're looking forward to a fun and productive summer, and then to a great start to fall, first school year ever, I think, in this district where we've had air conditioning across our district, with the exception of a couple of classrooms at WJHS on the main floor. But all of their classrooms will be air conditioned when we start the school year, and we're really excited about that. So, thank you to the board for your support of all of that. Later, we will ask the board to approve the personnel report. We're continuing to interview and hire teachers and certified staff for the upcoming school year. On this evening's personnel report, again, we are very proud to welcome several outstanding teachers to our D39 community. We have been very impressed by each candidate pool and are proud to recommend these strong candidates to join us for the upcoming school year. You'll also see in the consent agenda later this evening, excuse me, that the non-union employee benefits are recommended for approval by the board this evening. We have about 10 employees who are non-union positions. They are also not administrators. So, they kind of fall outside of the bounds of many of our other groups that are covered by contracts or collective bargaining agreements. So, the proposed adjustments to the non-union employee benefits provide changes to the benefits for those specific employees. Historically, most of our non-union employee benefits align to the support staff contract. And the support staff contract, as you know, was updated in 2022. So, this evening, we are recommending some updates that align those benefits with those 2022 changes. And so, you'll see that on the consent agenda this evening. In terms of property tax assessment appeals, District 39 received three PTabs in the last month. An estimate of the financial impact has been prepared for the board, and should the appellate be successful in their appeals, that would be the impact. Freedom of Information Act requests, the district received a FOIA request from Joe Codaro, the compliance officer, requesting all bid documents and bid results for any work done by Painters USA. That brings me to the conclusion of our announcements. Happy to move on to annual business.
That would be great. Any board members that need to make a comment before we move on? Okay, let's roll.
Okay, well, we are moving on to the annual business of reporting our end-of-year presentation on our District 39 strategic plan. As we heard, the district's strategic advisory team met and has reviewed this plan and provided us some feedback on the progress that has been accomplished. We will use this plan in the report to lead us to our planning for the upcoming school year. And again, I want to highlight everyone's work and contributions to reporting out regularly to the Board of Education at our Committee of the Whole meetings. Those really have become an important part of our board's review of the strategic plan. So, today, this is kind of a high-level summary of what's been accomplished, and I want to, again, encourage everyone, if you're looking for some more details, if you'd like to learn more about any of the topics covered here today, please look back at our Committee of the Whole, whether you go onto the agendas, all the reports are there. If you want to watch the videos, those are available for you too. But today really is a summary of the progress that we've made this year so far, and we're eager to share that with you. So, Katie, are you going to kick us off?
Yes, I'll kick us off. So, good evening. On behalf of all of the administrators, we would like to share with you the end of our third year of a five-year strategic plan. So, we'll begin with just a reminder that we have this one-page strategic plan information sheet that people can access on our website. And again, just to echo what Dr. Kerma Scoly just said about the strategic advisory team, we did have those takeaways. We're finding ways on how to improve our process, how to improve our communication with not just the members of DSAT, but also our community members and parents. And so, I think we have a plan to move forward next year on how to accomplish that, but it really was from the feedback that we've received throughout the year from our strategic advisory team that's helped us immensely. And so, we're looking forward to our final meeting where we will review a draft of next year's action steps. So, we're going to start with Goal One, which is student achievement and growth, ensuring a differentiated education that provides a strong foundation of rigorous academic learning. And this slide shares with you what our key performance indicators are, our outcome indicators, and our strategy indicators. And so, when we started this year, we identified some high-priority action steps. And as you can see on the slide, all of them have been completed or ongoing. When we say that they are ongoing, that means that they have either been just embedded into our practice and institutionalized, or there's a little bit more that we want to continue to improve upon. And so, you'll see completed or ongoing in each of these. So, with our KPIs.
Yeah, so we shared a little bit about this in the assessment report at the Committee of the Whole, but I'm very excited to share that our KPI is looking at early literacy and early numeracy. We've achieved both of our targets, so this is very exciting. I know that the kindergarten and first-grade teachers have been doing a ton of work in making sure that our students are making progress. We've been revamping some of the early materials that we're using for those students and our assessment systems to make sure that we're able to catch those students that may be falling behind and give them the supports they need that they can be on track. As a reminder, in terms of making or meeting our KPI, it was 80% of our kindergarten and first-grade students scoring either average or above average on the AIMS Web measures of early literacy and early numeracy. And we met that for both of them, so it's very exciting.
And for our second through eighth-grade students, we are monitoring their achievement in both reading and math, and also growth using the Assessment NWA map. And we're really close, but you can see the progress that we're making in these graphs. So, for ELA, we wanted 25 or more, or our goal is to have 25 or more in the high-growth category, and we're at 23%. And then for ELA also, for 15% or less in the low category, and we're at 17%. So, these are aggregate data for all of our students, second through eighth grade. And for math, we set a little bit of a more rigorous goal, 30% or more in the high-growth category, and we're also almost there at 28, with 15 or less in the low-growth category for math. And we have met that KPI. And that is for the growth. Now for achievement, our goal was 50% or more in the high-achievement category, and we're at 44 currently. And for 4% or less in the low-achievement category, we have met that at 4%. And with math, again, we set a bit of a higher goal of 55% or more in high-achievement category, we're at 52. And we have met our 4% or less in the low-achievement category, which is 3%. We have a strategy indicator for goal setting. One of our strategies was to engage our students in goal setting. And so, we looked, I'm presenting to you what you've seen before with semester one, and then compared to semester two. And we are doing very well with our elementary students as far as setting academic goals and non-academic goals. We have a group of teachers also fine-tuning some of the resources and reflecting on implementation, and they will share that in the fall. Same is true for fifth through eighth. We want a little bit more participation in the responses that we get, but overall, you can see that there has been an increase in the academic area of goal setting, and then some non-academic areas of behavioral SEL goal setting as well. So, goal setting is becoming a real practice within our schools and among our students, and we want to continue to improve in this area. And then we always share about our professional development. We've been engaging our teachers in using their voice and letting us know, hey, have we met the mark or have we not? What are the different ways that we can improve? And so, we keep track of all of our ratings and how our evaluations are compiled. And overall, we have a 4.1 in our Institute Day format, so we know which areas and which groups. We can focus a little bit more attention, but our target is at least a 4.5. This next slide, though, shares with you that our Academy 39 or our more focused courses that are also taught by our teachers are presented or an expert outside of our district. And we met that at least 4.5 as a 4.7 rating. So, we'll continue to monitor all of the groups and make sure that we are meeting the needs.
All right, Goal Two is supportive community. So, our goal is to cultivate a supportive and inclusive learning community that is responsive to the social, emotional, and behavioral needs of each student. You can see here are key performance indicators similar to the previous goal. Just, I want to call your attention to the strengths-based measure of student social-emotional competency development. We did review that at the Committee of the Whole meeting last week, but we will share the report on the dashboard this evening and talk a little bit about what targets we set there. We'll also talk a little bit about five essential student data.
So, when we look at the high-priority action steps, one of the areas that we really focused on and have been for the last couple of years is creating a positive and proactive climate in our buildings and really helping support our students to demonstrate appropriate behavior across the board in a very proactive way. So, each of our buildings has a foundations team. We've been working with Safe and Civil Schools to provide trainings over the past couple of years, and the teams are reporting great success. The data that they've been reviewing is wonderful. They've implemented school-wide behavior, common behavior language and expectations in multiple common areas in each building, and we will continue to work on this next year as we move into more common areas.
Next is our social-emotional curriculum pilot. Toni mentioned Wayfinder earlier when we had our students here. And Wayfinder is the name of the curriculum that we have chosen to pilot and now implement full-scale, fifth through eighth grade. The pilot was really successful. We had three teachers at each grade level, and then we were able actually to get access for all of our teachers by the end of the year. And so, they were able to try some things out and experiment with some different lessons. So, that has been very successful. The next is about our recommended grades five through eight schedule, including time for social-emotional skill instruction. And that was shared earlier at a Committee of the Whole meeting, how we are planning to have some time built into the day for social-emotional learning via Wayfinder, most likely. The homeschool reporting system for social-emotional learning is, we are working on a summer project for that. It's ongoing, so we are just finishing some things this summer, and then we will do some piloting of different formats next year for that. Same with, well, they implemented a line process for SEL problem solving. We had a team working on tier-two and tier-three toolkits. Those will be finished up this summer and then implemented. And finally, staff capacity and responsiveness around diversity, equity, inclusion, and belonging, or DEIB. That's ongoing and probably will be, as Katie mentioned, just a part of our fabric. We've done some things at Institute Days. We're doing some summer work with our DEIB team to accompany some of our SEL lessons. So, look for more about that in the future. This is the next slide that reports on the dashboard information about our social-emotional learning assessments. And so, in the first, in the left-hand corner there, at the top, you'll see information about CELWEB, which is what we have for grades kindergarten through fourth grade. There is a separate assessment for kindergarten through third and one just for fourth grade that we use. We chose to target the areas of emotion recognition and social perspective-taking for kindergarten through third grade and set a goal of improving our percentage by, our positive percentage by 5%. You can see that we reached that goal in emotion recognition and came really close in social perspective-taking. For grade four, we also focused on two areas, understanding others and social problem solving. They align basically with what the K3 are. And there again, we had similar targets, and we improved in understanding others and recognized that that goal of 5% would have set us at 99%, so we might want to review that a little bit. It's a lofty goal. And then, social problem solving, we went down one percentage point, but that basically stayed the same. So, those are really good, really positive indicators of the SEL work that is going on at K through four. They have had a set curriculum for the last couple of years, and so, as we look to grades five through eight, we are hoping for some more improvements as we implement full-scale next year. We looked at a couple of different areas on the mesh. You'll see their sense of belonging and valuing of school. Again, it's a separate assessment for fifth grade than it is for sixth through eighth, so that's why it's separated out. But we were looking for a 3% raise on all of those. Unfortunately, that was not met. However, we did recognize that a lot of our scores are in the 80th or 90th percentile or even higher as compared to middle schools nationally. So, you have middle schoolers who tend to write things. We're on the higher end. So, in the sense of belonging for grade five, that's at the 99th percentile. Valuing of school is at the 80th percentile. The sense of belonging for six through eight is at the 90th percentile. And the one that we are really going to look a little bit more closely at here is the valuing of school, which is at the 50th percentile. We do want to continue to dig in onto individual areas and see how we can target some of our lessons towards that, but that will be part of our action planning for the coming year. And you'll see on the right-hand side, five essentials survey data. This was reported back in the fall. It's from last year's five essentials survey assessment. As was mentioned, we reported out on the CSCI, or Comprehensive School Climate Inventory, at our Committee of the Whole earlier this month. And so, that data will be aligned in replacing this data for this goal and also for the next goal.
All right, Goal Three focuses on our professional learning community, essentially our faculty and staff. KPIs remain the same. They haven't changed since we started looking at this data. I will tell you that most of this data gets reported out at the end of the school year and updated for the fall report to the board. So, the information that you're seeing tonight is the same that's been shared since last fall, but will be updated come October of 2024. Our high-priority action steps, we've done a lot this year, and we've continued with our strategic advisory team. We have it as listed as ongoing because we continue to engage with our DSAT committee and seek guidance and ideas about the work that we're planning and the work that we've done. You saw in Goal One, as Katie reported out, seeking our district committee members and representing various disciplines, but also experience levels throughout our district. And we continue to have that as a process by which we select committee members to be a part of either curriculum writing or SEL work. We also are continuing to seek feedback regarding professional learning needs for all of our staff members, including our administrators, to try and really tailor the work that we're off, or the training. off, or the training that we're offering each school year. And we will continue to seek that information. And then, looking at the different culture and climate needs based on our new survey data that you've put some about, we will continue to look for tie-in to the previous five essential survey, but also looking forward with our new survey tool and ways to seek out additional information that may be needed even with the new survey tool. We had some training earlier in February for staff related to difficult conversations and how to facilitate those. We then engaged with our administrators in the same training a little bit later in the spring and received some positive feedback. We were able to carry forward the learnings that we had from that training. And then, last week at Committee of the Whole, I shared with the board an update regarding the recommendations from the DEIB task force, and we are excited to see how those recommendations might pull forward into action steps for the new school year. As I shared, our KPI data is much the same from the fall. It'll be updated in the fall of '24 to reflect our progress. The one element that I can share with you is the goal related to how often we're pulling our paraprofessionals to substitute within our schools. I have through quarter three tabulated. I haven't quite finished quarter four because the data's not in yet, but we are trending in a very positive direction. So, 2.1 for quarter one, three times a week for quarter two, and 3.15 for quarter three. Quarter two and three often tend to be more illness and more need for substitute, so that was exciting to see that we're staying right where we want to be.
Goal four, family partnerships. So, here's our KPIs, our key performance indicators, as well as outcome and strategy indicators mixed together on the next slide. You'll see our high-priority action steps for this school year. So, these are ones we focused our energies on. The first bullet point is the increased social media following and engagement. This is marked as completed. We increased our social media followers on Facebook and Instagram by over 33% over the last two years, while also adjusting our school's social media accounts to better align with what our families are using based on the fall communications survey that we are annually, committed to doing annually with our families. So, that increase in the followers is there for a few reasons, one of which is for every year that we progress, we have those younger parents who are just kind of natively using it, number one. Number two, I know we've made strides to make sure parents understand that not only do we have these channels but are using them. And three, Leo Kraus has done a very good job of how he posts items to make them engaging, entertaining, relevant, and you can see that in the posts as opposed to maybe what we've done previously. We completed the redesign to the district and school websites. All the schools are done. Some of the departments here at the MECC are done. There were three departments that had requested to wait until summer when things were a little more quiet. I don't anticipate there'd be a whole, there's a whole lot of change there because many of them are compliance-based and are required to have postings on there. But if you've looked at the district and school websites, for the most part, we are completed. Everything from the template to how many clicks it takes to get information streamlined, people's experience to get information a little more quickly, and then archiving off information that we've had up there for many years. And then, we had an action step, a priority action step, that the district will choose an online newsletter tool that provides some consistency and look across the district and ability to embed into email, as well as some valuable analytics, whether that be good or bad. We've had some people, wow, it's great that so many people are reading it, and then we've had others take a look and a little disappointed. But at the end of the day, we have that data. We selected SMORE, and 173 accounts to date have been created representing 4,325 individual newsletters that have been created by our staff for our families. And in some cases, actually, SMORE is used for internal use, like a department or a group of teachers will communicate with other teachers using SMORE. So, it's great to have mainly those analytics involved.
Next is increasing communication for parent understanding and learning around diversity, equity, inclusion, and belonging. And it says completed because we did increase our communication this year, but that, much like the earlier action step with DEIB, it's ongoing work that will continue through the next years to come. Development of a comprehensive transition plan from sixth to seventh grades. We, you might remember, we did a transition plan from fourth to fifth grades, and then that continued now, sixth to seventh, and that has been completed. So, we look forward to honing that as we continue our work with our transitions. And finally, an academic pathways document that's kind of like a course review or a course pathways for families at the 58 campus. That should be completed this summer.
As far as KPIs, some of this was not in this year's high-priority action steps, but are provided, the parent education events, which we continue to do monthly, report card access. You'll see the social media increases that I referred to. And then, we have on the right-hand side, information on transitions, fourth, fifth, and sixth, seventh.
Yes, so the sixth to seventh will do the survey again to see, hopefully, the increase from this year's work. And then, fourth to fifth grade, that was from last year.
Goal five is stewardship of resources. So, for goal five, we have three outcome indicators and three strategy indicators. And our high-priority action steps. So, for our biannual review of the capital improvement plan, that is ongoing. We've, the last, you know, three years, we've made a lot of progress on the projects that we had set out to accomplish over this five-year strategic plan period. But as we complete projects, and then more recently, several projects, we start to evaluate what might be coming up in the next few years. So, that's always going to be ongoing. We did review it multiple times, and we'll continue to review it multiple times each year. The second bullet point, like, looking at the prioritizing, the scheduling of our smaller capital improvement projects. These tend to be the projects that don't necessarily require the expertise or skill of an architect or engineering firm to design them, although in some cases, they may assist us. Those are always ongoing. That's a wide range of projects, involves a lot of input from the buildings and people in this building as well. And, you know, a great example of one that really got going, you know, very quickly today was the LED, LED lighting project that'll probably take a couple of years to complete. And then, the third item is continuing to monitor any legislative adjustments and what might be happening. You know, this is an ongoing item. We're constantly receiving updates and notices, just even today. There was, by lunchtime, I think I had three emails, two from law firms and one from a bond advisory firm on legislation that Governor Pritzker signed on Friday that talked about, you know, a handful of different ways school districts can issue bonds and what changes they've made. So, there's always things to keep an eye on, so we'll continue to do that throughout the year and keep an eye on what financial impact that might have on D39.
And the last bullet reflects the work that we've been doing with the 58 master schedules, specifically looking at class size and our non-hemological structural environment. That was something that previously wasn't looked at as closely, and that is, has been a priority over the last year.
And then, we've, since the winter, we updated with final actual information for fiscal year '23, just noting that the operating funds did finish solidly within the range of 40% in the low end and 65% on the high end. And for a lot of the financial ones, while we have a pretty good idea of where things are generally falling, similar to things that other people have pointed out tonight, that data usually could be anywhere from three to four months to maybe, you know, six to eight months after the year ends before we were able to get all that data and publish it.
And we are happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Board members, any questions, comments? Mrs. Schneider Fabes.
Congratulations. It was mostly completed or almost completed.
A lot of, a lot of hard work. Thank you.
Mr. Caesar, ready?
I can't believe it's been three years.
Can't either.
How is that possible?
We agree.
And I gotta say, I'm just so grateful to be on the board for seven years with Lisa, for how transparent this, you know, the planning process was and how the execution process is and the reporting out. And I, you know, I take comfort that there's not a ton of people in the audience all the time, you know, because I think, I mean, I think, and I, and what I've heard and understand from our constituents is that, you know, this was a really good process and it's transparent. So, I gotta say, I really appreciate it, and it's clear how much effort is put in. I mean, it probably, I mean, it's clear to me, but I probably only, I know I'm seeing the tip of the iceberg, but it sure looks like there's a lot of work here, and I appreciate it.
I will say, I think the transparency part has been really, really important to us, and I think the reporting out adjustments that we've made throughout this process have been really critical to our success, to the board's understanding of the work that we're doing, and we hope to our community's understanding as well. We want to continue to celebrate that and to share out especially, excuse me, what's happening at our Committee of the Whole meetings, because what we've learned is that's really the meaty part of the presentation and the data that we review with you and with our community. But it's really been a learning process for us, and I think that transparency has really been important. That tied with a willingness to be a little bit vulnerable when we look at our data and to identify some of the celebrations, as well as to acknowledge where we can continue to grow or improve. That's really been a mind shift for us to really be transparent with all of that as well. And I would kind of add to that right at this moment and just really commend our goal champions. When we started all of this, we kind of came up with the idea of goal champions, and each one of them has really taken a leadership role in leading and guiding and supporting their goal areas and their action steps. So, I really want to acknowledge each of them and celebrate them for their hard work because there's a ton of hard work that is represented here and even more behind the scenes. So, thank you all of them.
Any other board members? Thank you so much. I'll just echo what's already been said. Thank you so much. All right. I think we're moving on to the consolidated district plan.
Yes, thank you. I will introduce, I think Katie Lee is going to say just a few words about the consolidated district plan.
This is our annual presentation of our consolidated district plan, and it is in partnership with Kristen Swanson, Corey Wolfsmeyer. We need to be compliant with having and asking our board to approve our consolidated plan. It really is just a consolidation of all of the grants that we apply for and manage. I think the only notable difference this year, because our practices have remained the same, the way we allocate is the same, but ESER grant, the ESER III grant, is no longer available to us, and that's the only one that you will see not listed in the grant. So, we seek your approval as we enter our fourth year of our strategic plan. We will follow suit as far as, it's just, the responses are consistent with all of our prior plans.
Thank you. I think we're moving on to the state bullying report.
Kristen Swanson will provide that to us.
Yeah, so each year, we do a report. It's an annual bullying report regarding the number of cases of bullying that were both reported and investigated. So, as we all know, there are many circumstances. We have young children in our schools, children who are going through adolescence, pre-adolescence. Our students don't yet know how to behave appropriately in every circumstance and situation. So, we have what we would consider social conflict on a regular basis because children are learning how to interact with one another, how to be kind, how to manage their emotions in different situations. We take all of that very seriously, but we do each year have a number of cases or situations which are reported and are fully investigated. And that means that there are interviews with all of the adults around, with multiple students. There may be videos reviewed. So, we do full investigations for situations that may rise to the level of bullying. Bullying is a state-defined behavior. It requires things like a power imbalance, repeated substantial fear of harm for a student or disruption in their academics. So, we take all incidences of inappropriate behavior very seriously. We report out on those that rose to the level of a full bullying investigation. So, I'll get to that in a second. But first, I do want to share some of the proactive measures that here in District 39 we have been using. We have been increasing these on a yearly basis. As Kelly shared earlier, we're using Wayfinder and Everyday Speech to provide SEL lessons for all of our students on a regular basis. They're embedded in many of the activities that our students and teachers do. We have methods of reporting at the 58 level with HAC reports and WAC reports. We also have Safe to Help, which is an anonymous, could, can be anonymous Illinois reporting system, but it does trigger reports directly to school staff, to a number of us. So, when we get a report, it comes to a number of different administrators so that we're certain that things are followed through with. This year, we added a presentation on, an anti-bullying presentation for our sixth graders, and we had a parent of a student who was bullied, not ours, but a speaker came in and really shared a very powerful message with our students. It resulted in a lot of conversation, and our students had very deep, thoughtful conversations afterwards. We use the mesh and the CSCI surveys in order to identify some of the themes that we see in terms of bullying. This year, with the switch to the CSCI, it had a number of questions that sort of relate to that, so it gave us a better snapshot of what's going on with our students in a broader sense. And I will say that with those, we saw some wonderful responses, and 96.5% of our students feel safe when they're at school. We also saw some areas that we're going to continue to work on. So, not all of our students felt like there was an adult that they could go to to report bullying. They certainly reported seeing more teasing than, or name-calling than we might want to see. And we had some students that really were not so sure about how to help support, so really working with students to be upstanders as opposed to bystanders. So, we have, it generated a lot of information that can really help us continue to make our schools feel very safe for all of our students. In terms of the overall analysis, we had 17 situations or cases of bullying that were reported that rose to the level of a really full investigation. Of those 17, seven were determined to be founded, so there was bullying. The others were situations where there was maybe have been mutual sort of name-calling or disagreements. But again, we take all of them very seriously. We do view all of these circumstances and situations as an opportunity to educate our students. We do look for supportive ways to help them. We are a school. We know, understand that our students do not have all of the skills to engage socially with one another at this point, and so, we are about teaching them as well as holding them accountable for behaviors that are really inappropriate. Of the ones that were determined to be founded, we had a lot of name-calling or derogatory language, some physical aggression. It was often using the internet, so that is another area that we continue to, and Tony's, things related to the internet are also very helpful. It continues to be an area where our students are young and they don't know how to use it well and safely. Our responses for, when we have students that are engaging in inappropriate behaviors, our support, education, we use a lot of restorative measures. We have staff trained in all of our buildings to help repair relationships with children. We do have consequences. We may have them engage in some sort of an education event. They might watch a video and write a report on it. They may write, send a letter of apology to somebody. We do occasionally use in-school or out-of-school suspensions. The whole goal, though, is to make sure that we are supporting our students so that they don't engage in those behaviors in the future if they do. Does anybody have any questions?
Mrs. Papas.
I just, I have one question, and that's related to who does the reporting? Is it children or is it adults?
It can be any... It can be any, any. So we do have children that, that, that send in reports, that may go visit a principal or the social worker or their teacher. They may use the anonymous or the Safe to Help reporting. The investigations are conducted by administrators of the buildings.
So can you explain the anonymous one? What, how does that work?
So Safe to Help, you can be anonymous, but typically if they will say who the student is that they think it was either bullying or being bullied. And so we do have to be a little bit of a detective and, but typically they share enough information that we can figure it out. Not me, but usually their principals who have more information.
Mrs. Schneider Fabs?
Yes, we use restorative practices often. We have, we, our social workers are trained in it, some of our administrators are trained, and they try to do a lot of restorative practices with our students.
What's that mean?
So it's repairing a relationship between students. So it might be a facilitated meeting with two students where the social worker is there to help support. It might be having them, sometimes students don't want to do that. And, and we want to honor that if that's where they're at. But it may be them writing a letter. It may be doing something nice or kind for somebody because they have sort of disrupted or ruined part of the relationship. So it's trying to help bring them back together so that they can get along.
Mrs. Hart?
A quick question on Appendix One. When looking at the mesh data, um, so how likely is it that someone from your school will bully you online? Favorable response is 84%.
Right, so that, it's that opposite one?
It's the opposite.
Yeah.
Okay, so really only 16%.
84% answered in a favorable way.
Okay.
Yeah.
Just wanted to confirm.
Mrs. Kim?
I have a couple of questions. They're pretty quick. My first question is with respect to Appendix Two.
Yep.
So I don't know if you have this data available now, but there were like seven reports and at Ramona and six reports at High Press. Do you know if the same student or students were involved in that? Or like, is it a few kids or are there six separate students?
Some of, some of the circumstances are, are the same student is engaged in a couple of different circumstances or reports. And sometimes they're, they're different. And sometimes it's a group of children. So the report may have three or four students identified as being the bullies or being the bullied. So we do note trends when we're working with students. So if we do see a student's name cropping up regularly, that is more information about how to, that we need to provide additional supportive services.
Thanks. I just have one more quick question. When you said that some of the bullying was taking place over the internet, is that, does that take place outside of school but between students?
It, it can. And if it, if it's fully outside of school, then it's really not a school district responsibility. But if it bleeds into the school setting, then it becomes a school district responsibility. So if it is starting to impact students within the school, we will investigate it, even if it occurred outside of school.
Thank you. Any other board members? Questions, comments? Okay, thank you so much. I think we're moving on to the tentative budget.
All right, so the, looks like the next five agenda items are mine. So I just have a few comments really on, on each of them. So as I'm going through them, if anybody has any questions, please, please stop me. All right, so District 39 tentative budget. We looked at this in detail back in May. I tend to think of our timeline as five kind of major steps. Tonight being step two, where the board is formally approving that tentative budget and then setting a, a public hearing for, for that August board meeting. And then when we get to August, we'll, we'll have discussion and, and board action at any, at the, at both meetings. And then shortly thereafter, the administration will take care of filing the documents. And the Capital Projects Fund, which is one of our non-operating funds, the, the budget each year is comprised of projects from two different summers. What I've done here is list out for this, this current summer, which got, really got started over the weekend after school got out, is at the four different schools where we're doing work, try to identify for everyone what, what work is going on. There is this, you know, although dollar-wise, you know, nearly, not quite, but maybe like 40% of the, the dollars being spent is going towards the roof project. There is a lot of work that'll have some nice impact at a bunch of different locations in D-39. And then as we look ahead to next summer, you know, they're well, the design team's well with, well into the work for that first floor AC, um, project. To the point where at the end of last week, I got the information for the district to be able to enter into the pre-purchase agreement for the chiller, which, fingers crossed, should, should help us lead to a, a project that gets completed on time. And the Debt Service Fund, where we, it's the fund where we pay back our, our long-term debt, uh, bonds and debt certificates, a budget of 3.1 million. We do have three transfers between funds scheduled. The $1,062,000 is repayment of our debt certificates. We've pledged to use operating money to pay back those, um, those, those certificates over about a 10-year period. And then there's 5.8 from O&amp;M to Capital Projects. That is to cover the cost of these construction projects. That particular transfer also has a resolution for board approval later this evening. It is required by ISB each year. And then the one point, there's a $1.5 million transfer from the Educational Fund to the O&amp;M Fund. There is a resolution for the board to consider later. And that is not necessarily approving the transfer, but to approve a public hearing to consider a transfer between those funds. That particular transfer requires an extra procedural step compared to some of the other transfers that we do. In the operating funds, I just wanted to review with everybody. So by direction from ISB, we have nine different funds. The top six that we see listed there are the ones that are included in our operating funds, which is the focus of our conversation and discussion when, when we come to, when we're talking about budgeting. The operating fund summary for fiscal year '25 looks, looks as follows. $78 million in revenues, $74 in expenditures, which brings us to the first line item that I always gravitate towards, projected surplus of $4.7 million. We are transferring, um, you know, nearly $6 million out for construction projects, another million for debt certificates, which then would get us to the operating funds to a, a projected deficit of, of $2 million. Those two line items that I have bolded, the reason I've done that is, the top one is I, I look at it from operating of what are our recurring expenditures? What are we likely to spend and receive, you know, ongoing? And then the, the, the second one that I've bolded, while it is negative for this year, if we were to pull back on construction, we would easily have a balanced budget. So it's more of a conscious decision by the administration and the board to accomplish some construction projects and spend down a little bit of fund balance. But then you see, we're still a good bit above our, our minimum target of 40% fund balance for the operating funds. This shows revenues versus expenditures for, for a five-year period. We consistently have revenues exceeding expenditures. And then our fund balance graph shows that where we've been in the past and what we're projected to be at for fiscal year '25. And then similar to what we've done in the past, when we get into the fall, we'll update this with a, with a new five-year projection, add it on to the front end of that. That is all I have on the District 39 tentative budget that is up for approval. The next item up is the WICSE tentative budget for fiscal year '25. WICSE is our joint agreement between D-39 and Avoca School District. The revenues and expenditures for that budget are equal every year. There's no fund balance. For fiscal year '25, we're looking at $226,000 in revenues and expenditures. And this joint agreement has its own set of financials, which requires board approval, which, so the board will be voting to approve that tentative budget. Similar to D-39, we'll come back in August, hold a public hearing, and ask the board to formally adopt that budget later on. The next item is each year, the, the board is required to approve the treasurer's bond on the district's treasurer. So that will be in, I put the details in the memo for that. I believe the bond for this year is, is something in the $5.7 million range. Then there's a resolution to authorize administration to make pay invoices over the month of July. Our board policy is that we bring a list of all checks written each month, which we do at our monthly board meeting, such as tonight. However, we don't have a meeting in July, so the board annually will approve a resolution that gives the administration authority to continue to pay invoices over the summer until we come back for that August meeting. And then the last item is the budget resol, budget resolutions. We already talked about the transfer from Educational Fund to O&amp;M. That is the public hearing. The transfer from O&amp;M to Capital Projects. The last item in that particular group is a resolution for the board to approve a loan between the Educational Fund and the Operation and Maintenance Fund, up to $2 million that would be repaid within the same year. This is something we've done in the past. It's more precautionary than anything. Primary reason being that the O&amp;M Fund supports the Capital Projects Fund. The Capital Projects Fund pays for the construction projects, which tend to spend nearly all of their, all of its budget within the first couple of months of the fiscal year. Thus, there is a potential if the O&amp;M Fund could, could need to have a temporary loan. And I believe that is all that I have for this evening.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Caesaretti?
Yeah, I have a wonky question because I missed the, um, meeting. I would have asked you this.
Sure.
So, um, so you know how we love budget accounting or fund accounting?
Sure.
I, I think you've told me this before, but are the fund allocations set by law? And then we're sort of trying to reset, you know, move things around to reflect what's going on in the district?
No, we, we have the ability. In many ways, we have the ability to allocate, like revenue to a bunch of different funds. So we have a lot of flexibility within property taxes. But generally speaking, once revenue has been recorded within a specific fund, it needs to be spent for the purpose that that fund was set up based upon ISB's, you know, rules. If we were to need, want to move money around, um, there are specific allowable transfers that can occur. Some are simple board approval or revolution, resolution. Some require a few more steps. Some aren't allowed at all. So was there any fund in particular that you were?
No, I was curious. I was trying to remember why. I remember why now. Thank you.
Any other board members? Questions or comments? Okay, thank you. This is the second opportunity for the audience to address the board. Are there any audience members who wish to speak at this time? Please restate your name and community of residence. And because you already spoke earlier in the meeting, you now have one minute to, to address the board.
Brittany Ferris, Wilmatt. My child's at McKenzie. And I just am hoping that if we don't revise the class size policy, I hope that the Wilmatt residents and the taxpayers of Wilmatt have some answers to why our class sizes are so discrepant to all the neutrer of bigger schools. And just hope that we can get some answers to why our cap is 27, while the surrounding schools seem to be about 18 for three through five.
Does anyone else wish to address the board at this time? Yes, please restate your name and community of residence. And you have one minute.
Hi, um, again, Gillian Gilvey. I have a, um, a rising third grader at McKenzie. So, you know, regarding the District 39 strategic plan that was discussed, I just want to thank you so much for all your hard work in putting that together. I do have one comment. Will that be distributed publicly? Is public now? Oh, no questions. Ah, I'm so sorry. I have to listen to instruction. But, um, I'm one comment. When you superintendent, assistant superintendent was talking about all the matrix regarding test scores, and there were only four that met or passed out of 12, um, I'm a, I, I work full-time, and if I had a 33% success rate, it would be scrutiny into what I do, right? I would have some kind of disciplinary measure. So after three years of.
Your time is up.
That would be higher.
Yep, your time is up. Is there anyone else who wishes to address the board? Okay. We are moving on to the consent agenda. Are there any items the board would like pulled from the consent agenda? Okay. Mrs. Hart, please proceed with the motions.
Thank you. I move to approve the personnel report dated June 10th, 2024. I move to approve the 2024 non-union employee benefits. I move to approve the superintendent's employment contract for the 2024-2029 school years, including a 3.5% raise for the 2024-25 school year and future salary raises tied to CPI with a floor of 2.5% and a ceiling of 4%. I move to approve the 2025 Consolidated District Plan. I move to approve the fiscal year 2025 tentative budget as contained in this report for immediate public display and further approve the publication of notice of a public hearing on the tentative budget to be held at 7:00 PM prior to commencing the regularly scheduled Board of Education meeting on Monday, August 26, 2024. I move to approve the Wilmatt Community Special Education Agreement fiscal year 2025 tentative budget as contained in the report for immediate public display and further approve the announcement of a public hearing on the tentative budget to be held at 7:00 PM prior to commencing the regularly scheduled Board of Education meeting on Monday, August 26, 2024. I move to approve the renewal of the State of Illinois School District Treasurer Bond in the amount of $5,500,000 for fiscal year 2025. I move to approve the attached resolutions authorizing accounting transfers from the Operations and Maintenance Fund to the Capital Projects Fund and approve the attached resolution authorizing an inter-fund loan from the Educational Fund to the Operations and Maintenance Fund and approve the hearing to discuss a permanent inter-fund transfer from the Educational Fund to the Operations and Maintenance Fund and further approve the publication of notice of a public hearing on the permanent inter-fund transfer to be held at 7:00 PM prior to commencing the regularly scheduled Board of Education meeting on Monday, August 26, 2024. I move to approve the attached resolutions authorizing accounting transfers from the Operations and Maintenance Fund to the Capital Projects Fund and approve the attached resolution authorizing an inter-fund loan from the Educational Fund to the Operations and Maintenance Fund and approve the hearing to discuss a permanent inter-fund transfer from the Educational Fund to the Operations and Maintenance Fund and further approve the publication of notice of a public hearing on the permanent inter-fund transfer to be held at 7:00 PM prior to commencing the regularly scheduled Board of Education meeting on Monday, August 26, 2024. I move to approve the attached resolutions authorizing accounting transfers from the Operations and Maintenance Fund to the Capital Projects Fund and approve the attached resolution authorizing an inter-fund loan from the Educational Fund to the Operations and Maintenance Fund and approve the hearing to discuss a permanent inter-fund transfer from the Educational Fund to the Operations and Maintenance Fund and further approve the publication of notice of a public hearing on the permanent inter-fund transfer to be held at 7:00 PM prior to commencing the regularly scheduled Board of Education meeting on Monday, August 26, 2024. I move to approve the attached resolution authorizing payment for goods and services between now and the next board meeting scheduled for August 26, 2024. I move to approve the bills for payment. Back, I move to approve the accounts payable, accounts payable for bills listed between May 21st, 2024 through June 10th, 2024 in the following amounts. Educational Fund, $224,202.9. O&amp;M Fund, $59,754.41. Debt Service, $156,271.25. Transportation, $12,341. Capital Projects, $641,493.08. For a total, all funds, $1,094,061.83. I move to approve the manual checks issued between May 21st, 2024 and June 10th, 2024 in the following amounts. Educational Fund, $463,158.15. O&amp;M Fund, $33,020.42. Debt Service, $305,641.25. Transportation, $32.04. Capital Projects, $8,078.32. Tort, $7,690.65. For total, all funds, $817,620.83.
May I have a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Bonnie Kim?
Yes.
Allison Pathless?
Yes.
Amy Paling?
Yes.
Lisa Schneider-Fabes?
Yes.
John Caesaretti?
Yes.
Ann Hart?
Yes.
Erin Stone?
Yes.
Motion carries. We're moving on to conference items. Is there any old business? Is there any new business? Is there any good and welfare? Mrs. Schneider-Fabes.
To say how I was absolutely blown away and amazed by the video of the special graduation for the student in Central School, and that going above and beyond doesn't even come close to what, what that was. That was absolutely incredible. The teacher did an amazing job in celebrating that. Very special graduation, which was.
Pretty special. Pretty special to be part of.
Me too.
Me too.
Thank you. Any other good and welfare?
Share a quick one of so many of the celebrations over the past few weeks. One that I really enjoyed was the High Crest Outdoor Concert. Of course, being in this area, the initial date, it rained and they had to reschedule, which I'm sure was really simple, given everything that's involved in pulling that off. But the makeup day was beautiful and it was no small feat. It's the orchestra and the bands and the choirs across fifth and sixth grade. And my favorite moment was there was a song that the choir sang called "When I Grow Up." It's from Matilda. So sweet, if you haven't heard it. Listen, it's just a very sweet song. And it was just looking around there, it was a beautiful day and so well-attended, and just hearing the kids sing "When I Grow Up" and just thinking about everything that goes into shaping who these kids are and who they will be when they grow up and all the work that everyone does. It's just a special moment, and I felt very grateful.
Thank you. Anyone else? Any more good and welfare? Mr. Schneider-Fabes?
Sure, of course.
Having been at seven graduations as a board member, I just want to say that was the best that I've seen, that I've been at the old gym, outside, inside, divided up. It was lovely to be all back together, physically comfortable, with no glitches. I mean, maybe there were, but I didn't see any.
Then it wasn't a glitch.
It was really great. And so I don't know what risk he took, but it was worth it. It was great. They did a really good job. They really did. It was awesome.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. I seek a motion to adjourn to executive session to discuss special education, individual student matters.
I move to adjourn to executive session to discuss individuals, individual students in special education programs and other matters relating to individual students.
May I have a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Allison Pathless?
Yes.
Amy Paling?
Yes.
Lisa Schneider-Fabes?
Yep.
John Caesaretti?
Yes.
Ann Hart?
Yes.
Bonnie Kim?
Yes.
Erin Stone?
Yes. Motion carries. We are now adjourned to executive session, and the time is 8:36 PM.